All right, sisters and brothers, it is 7 o'clock on the nose. It's time to begin this Village of Sufferin' zoning board of appeals meeting. Would everybody rise please for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance, flag, United States of America. Before we move into the items to be discussed tonight, I know there are members of the board that would like to have a consultation with our attorney this evening. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Motion.
All right, motion, Mr. Adwar, or is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Marks.
Just so we're clear, that's a motion for a recess to have a session, an attorney-client privileged session.
Thank you, Mr. Magrino. Motion for a recess for attorney-client discussion. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll be back. The time is 7:13 PM. Can I have a motion to come out of recess?
Motion.
Mr. Zavoski, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. First up, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Sufferin' will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 17th. That is not correct. It is August 28th.
It was canceled then.
Yes, July 17th was canceled, it is August 28th. Sorry about that. At 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible at Sufferin' Village Hall, 61 Washington Avenue, by Michael Abramow for variances from the Sufferin' Village zoning code for construction of a 24-by-30 garage to be located at 30 Pavilion Road, Sufferin', New York. The variances requested are from Section 266-15G of the Village Code regarding use of yards for accessory structures, seeking permission for 864-foot floor area, maximum permitted 100-foot floor area, and for placing the accessory structure in the front yard, accessory structures permitted in rear and side yard only. Premises affected is situated on the west side of Pavilion Road, Sufferin', New York, and is approximately 40 feet north of Pavilion Ridge Way. The property is listed on the Village of Sufferin' and Town of Ramapo tax maps as Section 47.84-1-1. Mr. Abramow, would you come forward, please? Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. One thing I forgot to do before we got started, our chairman, Barry Tessman, was unable to attend. My name is Bruce Simon, I'm the acting chair tonight. Okay, Mr. Abramow, what have you got for us?
Okay, I have written a little introduction to the project, my purpose, problems, goals, what I seek to do. So, I'll just get started. My name is Michael Abramow, I'm the owner and resident at 30 Pavilion Road, and I'm requesting, I'm requesting variances on front yard use, accessory structure area, which you know, and disturbance of steep slopes, to build a detached garage and accompanying driveway on my property at 30 Pavilion Road. The structure is essential for the proper storage of personal supplies and maintenance equipment for my home and property, personal use, not commercial. It will also mitigate significant challenges posed by my property's extreme topography. Currently on the property, I have approximately 10-by-20 shed, and then there's an 8-by-10 shed as well, but the shed is inadequate in terms of size and location, forcing me to keep home and property maintenance equipment, like my garden tractor and sometimes building materials that I'm using in my home, outdoors. This leads to weather damage, visual clutter, and makes routine property maintenance difficult and unsafe. In front of the existing shed, there's only about six feet of space to walk through, and then there's like a five-foot drop-down retaining wall on one side. So navigating this space when you're trying to do things is somewhat risky. I actually have fallen off the wall before. Carrying and pushing things up and down the hillside to the shed, it is located technically in the side yard, up the hillside, carrying and pushing things up to the shed is laborious and time-consuming, and often requires multiple people to do. I mentioned in my application letter that I store and work on my motorcycles in the shed, and I currently get up the hill via like a footpath I created from the lower part of my property up to the shed. And so, what I'm asking for here is an accessory structure, such as the proposed garage, is, I believe, the only viable path to bring my property into full compliance with the Village Code, which prohibits outdoor storage. By providing secure indoor space, it will eliminate any and all outdoor clutter and significantly improve my property's appearance. More importantly, it will enhance the overall habitability and general ease of use of the property. My home itself, inside, has very limited interior storage for basic household items, from cleaning supplies to hobby equipment, you might have like sports equipment or something like that. The garage will free up valuable interior living area by allowing me to move said supplies to the garage and organize them, and allow the primary dwelling to function more effectively as a home. As mentioned earlier, I do maintain my own general lawn equipment, motorcycles, sometimes cars, that includes my motorcycles and my truck. Just to reiterate, these are personal items and are not owned or used in any commercial capacity whatsoever. With that, I spend a lot of time in my shed and laying in the gravel under my truck. More space and more convenient access to my workshop, simply put, would improve my overall quality of life at home. I intend on installing electrical service on the garage, but not water or sewer. The project also includes removal of the existing shed, keeping the number of accessory structures in compliance with Village Code, and clearing out the lot a bit. The variances I'm requesting is not just a matter of convenience, but a necessity born from hardship imposed by the property's natural features. The combination of a steep grade, irregular lot shape, and underlying bedrock in some areas make it unfeasible to build a code-compliant garage in the side or rear yard, or to build an attached garage attached to the home. Any attempt to do so would require massive cost-prohibitive excavation, extensive retaining walls, and tree removal, fundamentally altering the landscape at an unreasonable expense. The proposed front yard location is the only feasible and practical site on the entire property, and in addition to my proposed plan, I have considered alternative options to address the problem that I outlined. They include expanding the existing shed, building where my existing parking area is, I don't have a driveway, it's more of a cutout in the side of the hill, building at the property line down the hill by the fire hydrant, down my road a little bit, and I can expand on these alternatives if you like. A garage and driveway, sorry, a garage and driveway previously existed on the property, and my proposal seeks to restore this functional in the most possible way. Furthermore, the structure is consistent with the neighborhood, as my immediate neighbors also have a detached garage in the front, which they are currently restoring. I also intend on cleaning up the erosion in my existing parking area while I have the workers and equipment there doing this project, and adding some erosion controls, soil retention, water flow controls, in addition to some landscaping finish work along the road that, you know, I'll have them there to do. This project is the only workable solution to my storage needs and my desire to be code-compliant property owner. It will be a long-term asset to the neighborhood, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any of the members like to say anything? Mr. Marks?
Just a question, you mentioned water flows and how you would manage that. How would you manage that? Could you describe that a little bit more in detail for us?
Right, so, as you know, I have an engineer working on it, so my expectation is that there will be a retaining wall, and with that, it's definitely necessary that we have drainage set behind the retaining wall, right? So that typically would include corrugated drainage pipes behind the retaining wall, four foot of backfill gravel, and the, yet to be confirmed, but the exit of said drainage would likely be located near the existing sewer entry on the roadway, which is, if you have the map, it's approximately where the telephone pole is, where Pavilion Road So in other words, an engineered solution along with the retaining walls. I guess I would also like to add that because of the topography and the existing, just various paths that go along the side of the hill, along with tree coverage, not much water actually pools up there and flows down there, and more comes down across the topographical lines down to where the property comes to a point. That's really where water goes, not really where the proposed garage is located.
Okay, thank you.
I attempted to go to your site, and unfortunately, there was a dog somewhere close by, and I felt uncomfortable.
Oh, okay.
Going onto the property by myself. But, you know, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around of how things would look, kind of visually.
Yeah.
Especially with that slope. You know, if there's some kind of, the type of structure that you're trying to put up, if there's some kind of way that we can see what you're proposing would look like virtually or something, instead of the schematics, it's very, you know...
Right. I don't have a, you know, a mock-up of, you know, what it would be at the street level, so I can only do my best to describe, but you know where the site is, the exact site of where the garage is supposed to go. And from that side, you know, the building will be, the floor of the building will be below grade, right, so it will be excavated down. Yet to be determined how far we can go, how far we need to go, that's for the engineer to provide those details, but above that retaining wall next to the road, you would see the side of the garage building. It would be, you know, and then I am wanting to do a metal-sided building with, you know, painted a color, and a metal roof as well, so I don't have a mock-up for you to see.
Yeah, that's the thing, because if we're looking at the aesthetics of the community up there, you know, trying to make it blend the way, it's very nice the way it looks, it's like mountainous kind of thing, and...
Right.
And that's a kind of a steep slope there, and then we have the drainage too, that I think my fellow board members just touched on, you know...
Yeah. I mean, definitely aesthetics are a factor that I am considering. I don't want it to look ugly either, and, you know, I think that because the building will be reset, you know, we won't be seeing, you know, a 10-foot-high wall above the retaining wall because it will be built below grade to an extent. So, yes, you will see the side of the building a few feet up, and then the broad side of a roof, and that kind of what it is, is what it is. As far as landscaping, that retaining wall below the proposed area is kind of spilling over, so this is a discussion I have yet to have with an excavation company, but to fix that wall where it's not spilling over into the road and, you know, soil's not like eroding, is something I definitely want and need to do, and should do if I have the equipment there on site.
It's kind of narrow up there.
Yeah, it's kind of narrow, yeah. Yeah, we don't need rocks like spilling into the road, yeah.
I would just say to the board members, as I visited the property, is that there is, and it's on the schematic as well, that there was an old gravel driveway that was relatively steep to get up to that area that was there. So if I'm considering, you know, some level of aesthetics, I think that something that may be paved may look better in general leading up to that space, and also be safer than this gravel drive that is just kind of there and not in use, and is just sitting there as a remnant of the past.
The only thing with the gravel, it may allow better drainage as opposed to a paved surface for runoff, is one thing to consider.
That's true.
You know, but I didn't really get an opportunity to go onto the site, like I said, to really visualize, you know?
I do intend on having a paved driveway, so, and again, with that, appropriate drainage because I also, I also don't want my hillside coming down and spilling over into the road. In some of these storms, I've had to go out and shovel the road, like shovel gravel and dirt back out of the road, just because it is what it is up there. So if I can take the opportunity while the equipment is there to refine the water flow and slow it down, I'll definitely be doing that because, yeah, I also don't want it flowing into my house.
So I have a lot. First of all, I wanted to know what the retaining walls are going to be made out of.
Do I know?
Do you know? Yeah, I mean, in this one section directly behind the garage, this retaining wall is 15 feet high.
Yes, so this is an issue that I'm taking up with my engineer, that firstly, the retaining walls should be cement block. That said, the plot plan that you guys have shows a retaining wall that gives approximately four foot of setback from the building and is surrounding the building. I am talking to my engineer about modifying the plot plan such that the garage is in the same location, but we don't have these massive retaining walls. Instead, the building will be below grade and we have our, and the building is built on, partially underground, basically.
It would be the retaining wall.
Right, it would be built on top of the retaining wall. And so, the reason why he has these 15-foot walls is because in his original design, there was a short driveway where the existing gravel driveway is, and he wanted to have a 10% grade on that existing gravel driveway, which would require the building and that area to be excavated down like six feet, and then subsequently have very large walls. Instead, the updated plan, which I provided last month in July, has the longer driveway, and with that, we're able to, we're able to not excavate so deep where the garage is supposed to be, and then, again, secondarily, also build the garage on top of the retaining wall, so we bring those retaining walls in. I don't, I personally do not want or like those, that perimeter of retaining walls. I don't think it would look good aesthetically, I think it's cost prohibitive, and I would not do it. Yeah.
Do you know what slope he has the driveway at now?
I don't know what slope he has the driveway at now, that longer driveway.
All right. In my opinion, I don't, I'm not ready to vote on this because I feel like the drawing needs to be made differently.
Okay.
The fact that the slopes are shown over here.
Yeah.
At a different scale, I can't even determine how much of those slopes you're affecting by what we're doing.
Okay.
Because I can't put those two pieces together.
Yep.
In addition to that, I think the proposed grading should be showing. I know he's showing spot grades at the top and the bottom of the walls, he is showing proposed grading as you're coming down the driveway, but he needs to show how the grading is going to work around whatever you decide to do.
Yeah.
Like if you build the garage out of concrete block and that back wall is the retaining wall, then these drawings should show that.
Okay.
And I almost feel like I'd like to be able to see if there was a way out in the field that he could mark where the four corners of that garage is going to fall, so we could visually see.
Okay.
I mean, I kind of guessed, looking at the trees and where the utility pole was, but to be able to go out there and say, all right, these are going to be the four corners, we would have more of a visual of how much you're really going to have to rip away before you can get that garage in there.
Okay.
Mr. Adwar, would you like to add anything?
On the site visit, you mentioned alternative...
Oh, sorry. And in addition, when you did resubmit that, can we get the full-size plan? This bulk table, even at, when I asked for the bigger sheet and we got this, you still can't read that.
Okay.
I know this is supposed to be a 24-by-36 sheet, like a big, okay, so it has to be to scale so we can put a ruler to it.
Okay.
And for seven copies like that, so that each board member can have one?
Seven or nine copies?
Oh, nine.
Nine copies.
On the site visit last week, you mentioned alternative plans without taking down all those trees, and maybe without a driveway and moving the shed closer to the house. Can you expand on that for the board members that did not hear you discuss that?
Yes. So, one, okay, the alternatives that I considered are firstly, expanding the existing shed. This poses problems because I already have access problems, right, like just moving things up and down the hillside, and there's currently not much space to maneuver around the shed. There's some flat area, but it's, like I said, there's about six feet before that retaining wall down in front of the shed, there's about six feet to the right of like usable area, maybe 10 feet to my actual house, and then there's probably a 12-by-20 area on the other side of the shed. And to build out would mean taking up that space and making it more difficult to maneuver around the shed, even if you're just wanting to walk through to get to, you know, the other part of the yard. Never mind when you're actually trying to maneuver, carry things, plywood, my weed Additionally, the shed is on the only flat grassy area on the property. I know it's a large property for Sufferin', but there's not actually much flat usable area currently, and ideally in my mind, I would like to build a garage that is not in that location, and I will be able to reclaim that area for just having a patio, someplace to go outside, right, and not be tripping over rocks. And so in that way, I believe it will improve just the habitability and usability of the area around the home by not having the shed there. Yeah. The other two considerations, one was building where my existing parking area is. Now, the issues there are space constraints, we can't really dig any deeper without somehow removing bedrock, and we can't dig down without removing bedrock. Underneath that gravel is bedrock, and so that poses a construction challenge, but the space constraints are a problem because we can't, we can't dig deeper without, number one, the bedrock being removed, but also above the parking area, there is another retaining wall that would absolutely be disturbed if we excavated anymore. And so I would have to address this retaining wall in some way up the hill. Not to mention, you know, I also do have an RV that I park there, it does fit in the current driveway, parking area, it would likely not fit in, yeah, would likely not fit in a garage there. Not to mention, I would still need a variance on slope disturbance, still variance on building area, still a variance in the front yard, and possibly a variance on property boundary distance. Likewise, if I were to build at the property line down the hill, if you look at tree number one, that area is relatively flat, tree number one is down around the bend in the road below the proposed driveway. That is one of the flatter areas on the property, but it's also up against the property line, so I possibly will need a variance on property boundary distance. Still, I think that would be considered front yard, variance on building size, and still a variance on slope disturbance. So in terms of variances, it could be the same, or it could be an additional variance just because of the property boundary. Additionally, one benefit of that is a shorter driveway, right, you're practically at the road, which would be nice, but I also am taking security considerations in mind. The neighbor there, on the east side of the road, they had a landscaping trailer that was stolen out of their driveway a few years ago, so I'm like, okay, maybe I want the garage to be closer to my actual home, right, like on the property, but within view, right, it would not be in view of my, if I looked out my windows, I wouldn't be able to see it, so, yeah.
Thank you.
We met last week.
Yep.
I appreciate you having us to the house. Appreciate you coming out tonight. I heard several times you making mention to the fact that, it seemed to me that your plans are still in flux. It makes it, in my opinion, difficult for us to vote on something without a set knowledge of what it's going to be. And I'm just speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for any other board member. I think it would be better, again, for myself to know exactly where, as was said before, if the, if something could be laid out on the ground to show where the four corners of the structure would be. If you could somehow visually map out what it is that you would like to do. It's one thing to, for Mr. Adwar and I to have been there and you showed us where you would like the driveway.
Yep.
For the people that were not able to see that, it's a lot harder to understand. So I think that would be helpful. So I think that's it. Is there anybody here, is there any member of the board that thinks they would like to vote on this this evening?
So my suggestion would be along the lines of what has come up. It seems, these plans are very difficult to read, so I think you need to do the better plans, you may even want your engineer to come to the meeting because there are questions. And ordinarily, the ZBA doesn't get into drainage and things of that nature.
Yeah.
But because of the steep slope issue.
Right.
That's, to me, the biggest issue that the board is facing and why all the drainage is coming up. So, you know, it does seem like, you know, you should come back with more information, bigger plan, you know, what all the board members had suggested, so, you know, typically you ask if he wants to have a continuance, it can be continued. I'd also recommend, I don't know, Wilson, did he post a notice on it?
Yes, yes. You posted the notices.
Yeah, I posted the notices.
He gave me the sworn statement.
Okay, so, you know, if the board wanted to, if the applicant requests, it would be to request the continuation of the hearing so that you can, you know, give in, submit, I should say, bigger plans along the lines of what, as Wilson was mentioning, just in general, maybe, you know, something a little more detailed that the board can look at because of. And I, from my opinion, it seems mostly the slope issue is of concern and the drainage.
Okay.
Maybe a 3D type of a drawing, I don't know. Something that we could see the slope, you know, what you're trying to do.
Right. I mean, I can definitely talk to my engineer about that, yeah, absolutely. So firstly, I definitely would like to request a continuation. Um, so firstly, I definitely would like to request a continuation. Um, and what I have here so far is to physically mark the corners of the building and to flag out where the driveway would go, uh, physically on the property. Uh, you'd like to see revised plot plan, um, and then also print it out on a larger sheet, 24 by 36, no problem. And then, um, on that revised plot plan, you specifically do want to see, um, the drainage. Okay?
That sounds right, right?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to see the slope imposed on the map, so, if that has to be separated as two different maps, so that the slope and the property, you know, the physicality of the map overlaid on the slopes, so that we can see where exactly the slopes are going to be.
Okay.
Uh, involved. Um, and also the proposed grading around the retaining walls to show how much of the land is going to be regraded.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, I can do that, yes.
Where you go. Where you go. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing as there is no one from the public that would like to speak on this matter, Mr. Abramah, you're asking for continuance?
That's correct.
Excuse me, Mr. Simon, just lastly, is it possible to have the engineer also at the next meeting?
Okay.
All right, is there, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion, Mr. Adwar.
Mr. Adwar, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, is there a motion?
To continue.
Is there a motion to continue this until the next meeting?
Aye.
Mr. Marks, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And what's the next meeting?
It's a good question.
18th, yeah.
The next meeting will be Thursday, September 18th.
Okay.
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M. here in Village Hall.
And if, you should try to get all the information a week ahead of time. If you're not going to be able to do that, maybe contact the clerk, and, you know, you get the request in the German without having to come, but, you know, they would try to get it in ahead of time, so the board can get it in advance of the meeting.
Right, at least one week ahead.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you let us know when it's marked?
Yes, absolutely, I'll email.
Two weeks, at least two weeks.
Two weeks for the documentation?
At least two weeks ahead with the documentation. If you're not going to have the documentation two weeks ahead, you have to call me two weeks ahead to get you off the agenda.
Okay.
Just to be clear, that would be a week from today, September 4th.
Right. Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Suffolk will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, August 28th at 7:00 P.M., or as soon thereafter, at the Suffolk Village Hall on an application by Jorge Arias for a variance from the Suffolk Village zoning code for construction of an eight-foot by 12-foot shed to be located at 19 Clinton Place in Suffolk, New York. The variance requested is from the requirements of Section 266-15G1B of the Village Code regarding use of yards for accessory structures, seeking permission to construct an accessory structure in the rear or side yard directly on the property line without the required setback of at least five feet from any side or rear property line. The premises affected is situated on the south side of Clinton Place and is approximately 100 feet west of Antrim Avenue. The property is listed on the Village of Suffolk and Town of Ramapo tax maps as Section 54 dot 44 dash 1 dash 74. Mr. Arias, would you like to come forward? Please state your name, sir.
Thank you.
Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Your name, please?
George Arias.
Okay.
I seeking the variance for the, uh, the shed, like, you know, with building, I built it behind, uh, next to my house. I don't, mm, thought before that I, somebody give it to me, that I needed permission for the building, so people complain, and that's what I'm seeking the permission for, keeping the shed, or, you know. I usually, for stories, you know, my, uh, things in my house, that, you know, usually putting away. Like, that means, I don't know, what are the decisions, or keep it, or, you know. I appreciate if, you know, if you guys let me keep the shed, or, you know, have to remove it.
Okay. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Take a motion to open it.
Ms. Wilson, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Zabrowski, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this matter? There is not. Board members, is there anyone who'd like to address this matter?
Questions?
Are there any questions? My guess is false to me.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Marks, please.
Um, I'm wondering, could you just, um, address the history of that shed being there?
About eight years.
Okay, 18 years, okay, so.
What would be the feasibility of moving it? So it would be in, not in violation?
To remove it?
To move it to a different location.
Oh, to move it, it's like, we don't have, um, that much space to, well, I have to move it to the back of the house. I mean...
You were nice enough to allow me and myself and Mr. Simon to the back of the property, where I noticed a vehicle in the back right corner.
You want me to move it back?
I was asking as, as an alternative.
Well, yeah, it's, it's going to take a little bit, but I keep all the tools and everything, it's hard for me to go all the way in the back and pull every, you know, whatever I need back to the front of the house, because you, like you see, it's far away back, and to, especially in the winter when it's lots of snow, and, you know, it's hard for, you know, pick up my tools and whatever I storage there.
Didn't appear very far to me, just my opinion, just my opinion.
Well, if it's, if it's that situation.
I, I did visit the site, I did not get a chance to go to the other areas of the property, so I cannot, I don't have any understanding of the visual there, uh, but, uh, you know, like I said, I would have to see the property again to, to get a better determination of, you know, the aesthetics and what the feasibility is, you know, for you going back and forth and...
Yeah, like, you can see, you, you only see from the street, it's just a little peak. I mean, it's, it's not really...
Can I speak, I have to hold up, can I speak first?
It's my wife Cynthia.
One moment, ma'am, your name, please?
Cynthia Arias.
You, raise your right hand, you promised to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
Thank you. Just make sure you speak into the microphone, please.
Okay, so if you look to the left, and I guess it's 17 and 21, they both have garages that are butted right up against the property line. Ours is, and, and one of them on 21, I believe, is maybe a foot and a half from the property line, and then our neighbor at, um, 17 is maybe three feet from the property line. His garage is seen from the street, he doesn't have a fence, um, but it's also, you know, like right where our pool is, right? So you were at the property, you saw everything, right? So for us to put it there, aesthetically, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, you know, like it doesn't go right there, right? The best place for this, because of his business, is in the front, so that he has better access to the tools, so that's what he's really asking for. Does that make sense? Because in the winter, like he said, you know, like, the, the, um, concrete is built up, so that's a step, the patio, so that would be a bigger expense for us if he had to then build a ramp along with another patio to, you know, like to put it all the way in the back corner. That's, I don't know.
Thank you.
I don't, I personally don't want to have to look at it in the backyard.
I understand.
That's it.
Is there anybody else? Okay. Um, again, as we did for Mr. Abramah, thank you for inviting us to the house, thank you for letting us.
Thank you.
Around the property. Thank you for the offer to come swim in the pool, we greatly appreciate it. I think we're, it's the season, but we appreciate it. Um, the, the issue is, and you, you bring up, um, the neighbors and their structures. I don't know that that's anything that we can decide on right now, because they're not in front of this board. So while it may be true that there are other issues in the neighborhood, that is not for us to decide tonight. The only thing we can determine is whether your situation warrants a variance or not.
I missed, okay. I thought that they were grandfathered, you know, like, because they bought that house with that, so I figured that there was no, you know, both of them, both sides, recently, you know, the one side has been there for what, 10 years maybe? But that structure's been there since we bought the house in 98, 96, 90, you know, so I know it's been there since 96, I know that there's no problem, you know, like it came with that garage. And that's, you know, like, that's a full car garage, and that's right up against our property. I mean, I've got a picture of it, I mean, you saw, like, it was right, you see it from the backyard, but, um, and then the other side, you know, like, everybody's kind of been grandfathered in, I think even on our property, we did have one in the back. There, I know that there was a, um, there was a concrete slab when we first bought our house that was in the back, so I know that there was something there as well, but on the side, there was not. But what, what I was just not arguing, but, you know, saying is that there's other people that have them butted up against the property, that's all that I was saying. There's a further back on the property, not as close, but you really don't see ours from the street either. I think somebody was at the property next door, because there was a violation, and they saw our shed, because it's not something that you really see from the streets so much, you know, like, we tried to look for, look at it, and you really have to look, you know, not that we were trying to hide it, but it's not something that just screams, hello, you know, it's not, it's hidden, like, it's got the six-foot fence in front of it, you know, that we have the garbage, you know, put behind all of that, so. It's, it's not an eyesore for the neighborhood. The only one that it's an eyesore for would be our neighbor who's at 21, whose property it's up against, and he's not here tonight.
Duly noted, your neighbor is not here. I'm sorry, George, is there something else you wanted to say?
Uh, no, whatever you guys design, is, you know, I can...
Did you put that structure up yourself?
Yeah, somebody give it to me, and...
Somebody gave it to you, and you physically put it up?
Yeah, I built it up.
Nine years ago, eight years ago?
Yeah, I'm, I do construction, I, I build it myself.
Excuse me, you mentioned, uh, to Mr. Marks, eight years ago you built it, but I thought you said to my, to Mr. Simon and myself, that it's been up four years. Is it eight, or is it four?
Something, about four, five, yes.
Ask him how old he is.
I, I don't, but I know that somebody give it to me, and I even asked the guy, he give it to me, that I needed permission to put it in my premises. Say, 12 by 10, or whatever is about the ground, you see it and to see the blocks, I don't think you needed permission, so I built it, and it was there for so long that, I mean, nobody complains, um, that I needed permission for anything, so I don't...
We didn't always have that fence, so.
And, um, I mean, always been there for a longer time, they, they give it to me, so I build it, so, that's what, I don't know the rules that, you know, how big have to be, or tall, or whatever, to have the permission to build it. I just, he give it to me, I just build it up, and it been there for long.
Have you ever had a survey on the property?
We had it a long time ago, but, I guess we only had when we bought the house.
No? I was just curious if we, there would be a way to determine how far it actually is from the property line, since we don't actually know.
Had the shed, it's like, about, about three feet, two, two and a half.
You said you had a survey?
No, we don't have.
We don't have.
Did you didn't have, did you put the pool in, or the pool was already there?
We put the pool.
We put the pool.
And you didn't have a survey at that time, when you had all the pool worked on?
If we did have it, whatever the town required from us, we gave to the town, so if we did have it, the town had it at that time. But we had a flood in our basement, we don't have, I know we don't have any paperwork that was destroyed.
Um, I, I'm going to align myself with Mr. Adwar here. It might not be the easiest or most ideal situation for you. I think, speaking for myself, it's an easier vote if it's in the back corner, where many people have their garages and their sheds.
Well, we, I'm sorry, um, we have a neighbor behind the, uh, I don't know if they're here, but, uh, there's the ones that are more...
Listen, they're saying to move it to the backyard, and you can keep it.
All right, so, whatever you guys desire, sounds good.
Was that what you were saying?
I, I just don't want it, um, bother another people to, you know, but if you guys allow me to put in whatever you guys desire, it's not a problem.
Okay. First, Ms. Arias, this is an open forum, anybody can say anything they want. Please don't hide in the corner.
I just, I just, I just don't want another neighbor to get...
I will not have it on my record that I shamed a woman into going into hiding, no, no, no.
I just, I just don't want another neighbor to get, um, upset, because I, I put something behind there, because they have a backyard, the neighbors has basically, like, from here to the step backyard, so our shed is going to be right next to...
Can you put it five feet off the line?
Then it's going to be too close to the pool.
Um, if I can just make a comment, uh, the board members mentioning this, and I feel like maybe it would really be helpful to get a survey done regardless if you were to put it in the back, so we do have an understanding exactly how far that would be if we had to make that suggestion.
Doesn't seem like, uh, an awful suggestion.
Killed two birds with one stone. You see from the other side where the shed is, and it's available in the back.
Please?
Does the town have, like, would they still have, or the village, would, if we went to the office, would they still have the survey if it was on hand?
They might.
Just because right now, I'll be very honest, I don't like to say this in an open format, but it is a financial burden if we did, uh, if we had to pay for a survey.
You can ask to see your file in the building department.
Okay.
Uh, I would suggest tomorrow, contact the village clerk's office, tell them you'd like to fill out a FOIL request.
FOIL?
FOIL, Freedom of Information Law, for your property. The village clerk will get back to you when it's ready to be viewed.
Okay.
Thank you. You, you might also want to go to the Town of Ramapo, to see if they have copies of your paperwork in their files.
Okay.
Would you like to ask for a continuance?
Yes, I am. We want to, um...
Yes.
Okay. Seeing as Mr. and Ms. Arias would like a continuance, is there a motion?
I motion.
Mr. Marks, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wilson, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same, same as we said for Mr. Abramah, presuming you can get any supporting documentation to us by next Thursday, September 4th, you can be on the agenda for the September 18th meeting. meeting. If you cannot get it by September 4th, one way or the other, you need to contact Ms. Reamer, who is the clerk. And either you'll be on for September 18th or you'll be on for the October meeting.
May I ask one other question?
Please.
Is the applicant willing to change the dimensions of their shed in the event that the shed had to be relocated to the back of the property? Maybe make it more, I don't know, smaller if it were, they were concerned about the other neighbors? Or, you know, a little bit more aesthetic in terms of the outside of the structure? So it's not an eyesore if it was relocated back there?
So to do it smaller wouldn't be good for his business? That's my only thing that I'm going to say on that.
Yes, not going to have...
To do...
I mean, I would have to build two of them because it's not be able to fit anything. It's barely, you know, it's only eight feet by 12 feet long.
So you would say you would keep the structure in place?
He would move it.
He would move the entire thing?
But keep the same size.
Keep the same size.
I thought that was what the...
Yeah, I was just curious if you could, you know, not make it as large if you were concerned about the other neighbors or make it, kind of spruce it up so it's not so...
Yeah.
Yeah. Just to consider, if you're considering your neighbors. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Can I ask one last question?
Of course. I'm sorry?
Are we, are we, we stay?
No, you may stay or you may leave. It is your choice.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
All right. Next item on the agenda, adopting the minutes of the May 15th, 2025 ZBA meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Adwar?
Second.
Mr. Zabrowski, seconds. Thank you both. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Can we approve the decisions? Do we have to do that?
That's coming next. We have some decisions we need to approve. Yes. We'll start with this one. Suffolk Zoning Board of Appeals findings of fact and decision, Ray the application of 14 Wayne Avenue 202 LLC. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Ms. Wilson, thank you. Is there a second? Seeing no second, I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. For my client.
Yes, it was. Okay, so it is four yays, no nos, one abstention. And one abstent, yes. We also have the JP Morgan.
No, that's part of the minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, what part of this?
The JP Morgan.
This one?
Ah.
That's part of the minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Seventy minutes. That's the only, that's the only...
Oh, the other part of the minutes was Burns also?
Yes. That's the 14 Wayne, seventy...
Okay. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there anything any of the members would like to bring up?
Do we need to vote for approval of the date of September 18th or has that been voted on?
We will do that right now. That was my next move.
Okay, just wanted to, sorry.
How does September 18th look for the rest of the members?
Looks pretty good for me.
It's fine.
I'm good?
Yes, it's fine.
Yes.
That's a clean sweep. All in favor of September 18th?
Aye.
Okay, should we look at October while we're here?
Go for it.
Third Thursday would be the 16th of October.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good for me.
As long as it's not the 31st.
Mr. Marks? I'm sorry?
As long as it's not the 31st.
It is not the 31st. Mr. Green, will you go on the 16th? Okay, so we have adopted September and October. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Mr. Marks, Ms. Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
The time is 8:06. Thank you all.